It's six o'clock. I will call the July 25th meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. We have the Chair, Mr. Wald is absent and Mr. Burton is absent, but we do have a quorum. At this time, if you all rise, Reverend Jim Tenal from Baker's Chapel Pentecostal Holiness Church will lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and treat others as we would like to be treated. Let us not take lightly the important business of a county that takes place here tonight. We pray for our Board of Supervisors as they represent us and make decisions that affect us. May your divine favor be upon them so that their decisions are not biased or selfish, but for the good of all. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and for the service of humanity. Our personal faith give us strength tonight to act honestly and prosper in all matters before us. Thank you for being that source of guidance today. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First order of business, citizen's time. We have one person signed up, Linda Meyer.
Yes, good evening. I did a little reconnaissance today. I went over to the Glees Bridge. We are four months since you guys voted to redo it of the 16 months total that it was supposed to take. There has not been a footprint over there. There's not a two-by-four, a piece of metal, or anything else. Nothing has happened over at the Glees Bridge. So it would be nice if you could poke them a little, find out, because it's really a nuisance not to have that done. Also, I've seen a lot of people with different activities going on the last couple of weeks, and people have asked me concerning the rebates that took so long. It's not that it took so long. They were surprised that it was $2, $3, $4, and so on, like, why couldn't it have been applied to the next year instead of doing that? So we paid for software upgrades to make that happen. Then we paid for more personnel over all those months, then printing, and then postage to send me $4, and other people also. And I went, when I was at the bank, the lady said she, some woman came in, and she didn't even have a dollar. It was change for the rebate check. Now, it's absolutely silly to do that. So in regard to transparency, what did it cost us to actually pull this rebate thing together? Because it certainly doesn't seem like it was cost-effective. Okay, that's number two. Number three is the Krieger Road Bridge. It is in very, very bad condition. It is a wooden base bridge. It feels like a cattle bar when you go over it. The boards are loose. It's decrepit, and so on. So we'd like VDOT to look into that. Thank you so much.
All right, that's all we had signed up, so I'll close citizen's time. Next thing is payment of invoices. You all have information provided in your packet. Make a motion we pay the bills. Second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, that we pay the invoices. Is there any discussion? No discussion. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next is previous minutes from the July 11th meeting. You've been provided those. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Mr. Terry. Old business. We have appointments. Do we have any new appointments, Mr. Bear?
Well, we have a few vacancies there if there is any nominations.
Yeah, Mr. Bear. Mr. Chairman, I have a lady that I'd like to recommend for the Mount Rogers Community Service Board that I was sitting on earlier in my term. Her name's Jo Vires. So she actually worked with Mount Rogers Community Service under Lisa when Lisa was there. So I think she would be a good fit. I'll make that motion and we appoint her to that spot.
We have a motion that we appoint Jo Vires to the Mount Rogers Community Service Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to appoint his fires to the Mount Rogers Community Service Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Smith, if you would, if you could send contact information and everything to Ms. Collins or myself, we will get everything out to her.
Ms. Collins, I just sent the email to you.
You're super fast. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bear, do we have anything, any other business under old business?
I do not have anything under old business, Mr. Chairman.
I have an appointment, please, sir.
Okay.
I have an appointment for the Recreation Commission. I want to nominate Mr. Jeremy Hagie.
Jeremy?
Jeremy Hagie for the Recreation Commission, and I'll make that a motion.
Twenty-one second.
Smith is good.
Mr. Smith, I have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Jeremy Hagie to the Recreation Committee. Any discussions?
That's okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll get the contact to Ms. Collins.
All right, reports. Moving on to the Treasurers' report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Okay, I'll begin with the June 30th financial statement, and then I'll kind of backtrack and give you sort of a June 30th wrap-up on a few things with us, because when we were here, of course, before, on June 30th, it wasn't the end of our business day, so I really did not know how the day was going to end up for us. But referring to the Treasurers' report that was in your financial packet, the consolidated account contains a balance of $84,490,622 of that balance. The general fund balance is $43,691,927. And again, this is as of June 30th, month-end fiscal year-end. So any questions on anything through the financial report that may have looked odd to you or anything like that? Everything seemed to look pretty well in line, kind of going across the board, so some selections are a little higher than others, but it's, I think, a difference of progressively moving beyond the COVID pandemic, and people are traveling more, we're eating out more, we're staying in hotels, and buying a whole lot more stuff, whether it's through Amazon or instead of local brick-and-mortar store. I think we're all just kind of glad to be out of jail of sorts. Okay, so moving on, kind of addressing the 2022 tax collections, of course, it's been a wild and crazy 12 months. Normally, our tax season, or what we call tax season down at the courthouse, starts in about August, because Commissioners Office starts preparing the books to transfer to us for our work on our side, for the tax bills to go to the printers somewhere around, idealistically, mid-September, so it takes a couple of weeks for them to get bills printed, just because about every locality is billing out about that time. So generally, we're sending them about 50,000 tax bills at one time. As we're all very well aware, that was not the case this past year, and it went, it just turned crazy fast. So with personal property, of course, billed out, and then had the extended due date of December 30th. Real estate did not go out until February with a, end of March due date. So with all of that being said, and kind of the upheaval of everything, I feel like our tax collections are actually really good for the 2022 tax year. When I was here back on May 23rd for your second meeting in May, our collections at the time, we were at about 95.5% total collection. That's real estate, personal property across the board. As of June 30th, and looking at our numbers, we've changed a little bit. We've decreased, we're down to 95%, but that does take into account the fact that we've issued supplements. We had a lot of supplements that were issued because we were still finding, found real estate bills that had billed out in a prior owner's name instead of the current owner, and some of that was some software-related hiccups that we had in bringing the vision system onboard, and it kind of working with Munis as it should have with our data mapping and things like that. So we had to wait for the upgrade for supplements. We still had some hiccups. We've finally gotten those resolved over the last few weeks. So because of those supplements, we've had to adjust our collections a little bit, but 95% is very good compared to what we billed. That's 95% of collections compared to what was billed, not what's budgeted. In comparison to 2021, which was a normal tax year for us, as of June 30th of 2022, we were at 96.5%. So only being a 1% lower, I feel like is really good considering the wild ride that we had throughout the year. But staying with the 2021 tax year, our collections as of this June 30th, were a little over 98% of what was billed out, so that's really good, really good. Continuing all the collections, we'll have a tax sale coming up in the next couple of months. We had decree of sale at Circuit Court earlier last week, so we've now got a good group of about 30 parcels that we can advertise for a tax sale. Generally, you lose about 10 to 15 of those because people do redeem those, so we're hoping next couple of months we can get a tax sale moving and either collect on the taxes, or if it comes to actually selling those properties at public auction, at least we will be collecting the tax money on those, hopefully transferring them to the hands of a buyer that will pay the tax. So that's kind of all that I have going on on the collection side. 2023 tax bills, Commissioners Office is currently working on that data, so we're hopeful that we'll be back on track for regular billing cycles this year. There are a few, Munis had to write some scripts to get real estate bills to progress through as they should, so hopefully, a lot of those things have been resolved or in the process, that we will hopefully, as I said, be on regular schedule, because that way, it helps us, but also helps our taxpayers, because we got a lot of notes about the lateness of tax bills and things like that, so we just need to get back on track. So I'm hoping that we do. But for the most part, that's all that I have for you for tonight. I don't have much else going on. We're still kind of plugging along, even though it's more or less the first of August. For us, it really feels more like about the first of March with where we're at normally in a cycle, so we're kind of, you know, still trying to get a lot of things caught up and worked on that usually by now we're weighing over our heads on a few projects, but we haven't had the opportunity this time around, just because of, just because of the way things go, just because of the way things go. But we're keeping on keeping on, as I've said before, but if anyone has any questions or comments or anything, I'll be glad to answer anything that I can.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, you mentioned tax sales. Would you check with Mr. Rife on how close we are on the paperwork for the Brown House for real retreat?
I will. We had that decree on Tuesday, and I had not followed up with him, because I was going to give them time to get through that paperwork, so I'll check with him tomorrow and see where we're at on that, because I think, when we had talked last week, he was going to go ahead and contact Mr. Childers with the town of real retreat and notify him of the happiness, which Mr. Childers was at decree of sale, but let them know the final balance of what's to be paid in relation to the cost that the county's already incurred. That way, they could go ahead and be processing that check through, which it may be in their bill run for tonight, because they have a meeting tonight as well, so they may be going ahead and processing that through. So once that goes through, then I think the paperwork moves along, and we can get that transferred, and we'll get that written off of our books, so that'll adjust outstanding tax balance as well.
Appreciate it.
And get that property cleaned up and in a safer environment all the way around, so...
That's great.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner's not here, and I didn't see anything in the report, so we'll move on. Sheriff's Office, do you have anything?
None.
All right, thank you. All right, that takes care of the reports. Moving on to new business. First item is consent calendar. It's in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget amendment requests sheriffs starting salaries. Mr. Bear?
Yes, sir, and you've got a memo in there in order to bring the salaries, the sheriff's request of the $50,000 starting salary, and then they will add the $2,500 hazard duty pay on top of it. Would request that you all amend and appropriate the $69,078 as shown on the attached memorandum.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I have a motion that we amend the budget request for sheriff's office salaries. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Terry, this, all those, is there any discussion? But this, I will take a vote. Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Staff reports, Assistant County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have one action item request of this month. Ms. Delp is working on grant submission. It's two grants of the Withland Foundation. Those are due August 1st. The first is in cooperation with the community hospital and also with the town of Withful. It would allow our EMT providers to close the loop on patient care. They want to use a, purchase a system, it's an ESO system, that lets them see what a patient's disposition was. So they bring a patient in for care, they leave them at the hospital, they don't find out what happened to the patient. So the operational medical director can't go back and say, here's what you should have done differently in your care, so this will help them close the loop and improve patient outcomes. The second, the number has changed in that application. We're requesting that you authorize us to apply for approximately $275,000 in funding for Phase 2 of the Asia Park Playground redevelopment. That adds in some walkways that we're going to have to replace out there to improve access to the playground. So we're asking that you authorize staff to submit those grant applications once they're complete.
Okay. The way you do it...
Like, we'd request a motion to approve both of the grant applications as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve both grant applications. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. One, Ms. Lawson. All right, do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
And just one informational item, but two. One relates to the hockey team. There's an invitation-only press conference at the Apex Center on Thursday morning at 10:00 a.m. as the board, you all, are invited, if you'd like to attend. The reason it's not open to the public is because it is still an active construction site, so we can only manage so many folks there at one time, so... But that is going to be to announce the team name, logo, and colors for the hockey team. And of course, if we're going to have hockey this fall, we need a place for them to play, and today, they poured the rink portion. I've sent pictures to you all very early this morning of the start of the pour. They wrapped up the pour by about 11:00, and they have been burnishing the concrete this afternoon, so things should be nice and polished when I stop by there after the meeting. So as long as we can get equipment delivered, we are on track to make ice probably by mid-September. And the team will need it starting in early October. They're going to have a, an invitation camp for potential players, and so they need to be skating in early October. And you have my other action, or my other informational items and project updates. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
All right. County Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing, we received the estimates from the FY23 Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act. Historically, these funds have all, they're below the $100,000 threshold, so we can declare them all been Title I. Historically, they've all been Title I declared for the school system. I would recommend that you all authorize the election of this as 100% under Title I funding for the school system, and I will execute this and send this back tomorrow on the deadline.
All right, I'll entertain a motion that we schedule, or approve all this under Title I. So moved. I have a motion by Mr. Horni.
Second.
Second. Second by Mr. Smith. All right, Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that motion carries.
Red tape, that's the next part. Every time I think I am done with Orion Road and ready to start, VDOT comes back with some additional paperwork. We, they, we had done a revenue sharing resolution before. Of course, our personnel has all changed, they came back. Long story short, I would request you all approve this resolution 2023 and 26 for the rural addition of Bentwood Drive and Orion Wood and Orion Road into the state system, and that should be the last piece of paper that we need in order for VDOT to start construction this fall on the Orion Road, and then follow up with Bentwood.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Smith to turn the Orion Road over to the state highway system. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Terry. Are there any discussions? All right, all, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries.
And I will say, it's been a lot of paperwork, but the response and everything with VDOT over the last few weeks of all the things on this project have been very good, so I appreciate working with their, I guess, interim residency administrator right now, and they have been very good to work with. Last is just a informational purposes, the CARES Act sub-recipient monitoring review. The Department of Accounts has reviewed it, and With County has met all the requirements of the CARES Act funding distributed, and right now, there's no further questions at this time. Just want to share that information along with you. I appreciate Ms. Williams and her staff tracking and reporting everything and keeping track of the documentation. No action needed, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that concludes staff reports, board reports, Water Committee, Mr. Horni?
The Water Committee met...
I'm sorry. I forgot County Attorney. He got me upset earlier today.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Horni?
Now you're ready. The Water Committee met on July 18th, 2023, and makes the following recommendations. First is adopting an enterprise zone rate increase of 8% to coincide with the CPI increase.
Okay, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will state this does apply to the zone rates within Progress Park if anyone wants to exclude themselves from that for that reason.
Ms. Lawson?
Is it just for Progress Park?
Yes, just for Progress.
In general?
In general.
Not just one?
Correct.
Then aye.
Aye.
That was my vote.
Aye.
I hope so.
I was waiting for you to say I hope so, too.
I just hope so. I don't like those stories.
Motion passes.
Two is adopting the Dunford Road Water Project Resolution.
Okay, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Mr. Bear, you got anything?
Yeah, once again, just paperwork requirements. Rural Development is reviewing the PER and the engineering, not the P O, but the engineering report for the Dunford Road project, and I've had to send a letter to them regarding our finances and some of the money that we have in our water account, which includes the $4.5 million that we borrowed in interim financing, but they required also just the governing body certifies that we are making application and financial assistance and authorizing the chairman, vice chairman, or county administrator to execute the documents. So I would request your all's approval of this resolution.
All right. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and the third and final one is writing off and closing the accounts on the attached delinquent list.
You all have been provided a copy of the delinquent accounts that need to be written off. Most of them are for deceased and things like that. Mr. Bear, you want to add any more to that?
You've covered it very well there, but yeah, basically, that's one of the things they, they have been working on. They're continuing, obviously, taking ones to court in the process, but also coming back to ones, and as you see on the ones they've got here, it's, basically, the, you know, I'll start at the bottom one here, was like a disconnect and non-pay in December of 2009 that's set on the books ever since, and in the process, that was a tenant. The top one was an owner. There was a connection fee and a bill from the new owner, but no longer there, no later to collect on all these. So once again, just trying to clear those off the books that are uncollectible in the process of working on the collectible ones as well.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to approve the write-off. Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
I believe that's all the Water Committee has at this time.
All right, this time we'll go to the Board of Supervisors' time. Ms. Lawson?
I don't have anything, but I should talk a while, because I think Mr. Cook's trying to beat my record of shortest board meeting. You're doing a good job. I don't have anything. Thank you.
I'll fix them, take care of that. Mr. Bear, thank you for the quick response on the Hager Springs road there with the washouts.
I don't know the most they could do, but at least they responded.
Yeah, so, and I'll pass that information on. And I have touched base with Mr. Bear right before, prior to the meeting start, just in case anybody else, especially you Stacy, since you're the large. Water from Pepper's Ferry Road, from Carter'sville Heights up to around Thoroughly Farm Road, wherever it ends in that area right there. I think it's around Coldfield Services. And then also, people has reached out about water getting into the Gunton Park area, and I know it's on the long-term plan, but if we can, if there's any dates or the timing, if you can provide that, Mr. Bear, we appreciate it. And then, Mr. Hager's the only thing I got, is any updates on the property maintenance situation on Jacksonville Heights.
Our animal control and code enforcement officer has been by. He's reached out to the surviving family members. The owner of the property died July 5th, so some family members have been in there that, as they've moved things out of the house, they've trampled down some of the grass, so it's, it doesn't appear to be as much of a problem, but it's still the same, same grass and keeps growing. So the notice went out the first week of July, so they've, they've still got about a week to act, and if not, then we'll bring back. We had talked with Buildings and Grounds about the possibility of putting in a policy and providing some funding, so if we need to do that, we'll bring it back to you at the first meeting in August.
All right, thanks, sir. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horni?
The only thing I had, I've got an email that Ms. Myers had sent me about the Back Country Horsemen where they're doing, they got the grant to do the trail over there, and I will send that to all y'all, so y'all can see what they've done.
Mr. Bear?
Nothing at this time, sir.
And I don't have anything at this time. At this time, I entertain a motion. We go into a closed meeting for the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711-A5, Project HSR and JCR.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to go into closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We are now in a closed session. You opposed? Back in open session.
I think we had a citizen that wanted to come back in. He said...
Mr. Terry?
Whereas With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this state pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the, excuse me, with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, and such a meeting was conducted in conformity with the Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the... the requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in this closed meeting were heard, discussed, and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion, sir.
I have a motion to certify the closed meeting. I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion of second to certify closed meeting. This time we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to authorize staff to set a public hearing for the August 8 meeting. Do I need to specify...
We're at the second meeting, if we have, we don't have enough time for August 8. The second meeting on...
Okay. And do I need to specify for certain projects?
I'll be there for August 22 for HSR and JCR.
JCR.
Signing agreements.